I will call this March meeting of the Township of Riverside Board of Trustees to order. Please rise and join. Trustee Dropka, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're seated. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Present.
Trustee Dropka?
Present and accounted for.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Present.
Trustee Lupfer?
Here.
Supervisor Will?
Here.
Let the record know Clerk Blough is in attendance also.
Very good. We have a couple of sets of minutes in our binders and I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the February 11th Board of Trustees' Meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 11th, 2020 meeting.
I'll second it.
The motion and a second. Motion by trustee Highlandbach, second by trustee Lupfer to approve the minutes of the February 11th Board of Trustees' Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
Yes, I have one. It's on page five and top of the page under F Lions Club Chicken Dinner Placement Ad. It should say the Township's 150th Anniversary Celebration on September 19th instead of 9th.
Oh, sorry, ma'am.
That's okay. It's very easy to do.
Are there any other additions or corrections? Hearing none. I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with one correction here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Nay. Motion is carried. Next we have the minutes of the March 3 Committee of the Whole. And there were only two trustees and myself and the clerk there, so those would be the people who I would be looking for a motion from.
I'm moved to accept the minutes from the Committee of the Whole meeting.
I have a motion by trustee Lupfer to accept the meeting of the Committee of the Whole minutes. I will second that. Is, are there any additions or corrections?
Yes. If you go about halfway down the second page, trustee Clark and assessor Sickowitz are working on creating a logo with a graphic designer.
That would take out assessor Sickowitz.
Right, we're not. We're doing that together, aren't we?
Boy, I was putting you in there.
Now, did she get credit for the?
Thanks Fran, you don't have anything else.
I must have been thinking of you.
Well, we did talk about what she's got planned.
Yeah, that's right.
So...
Then if you go down, one, two, three dots where it says 5K race, that's kind of a 10K race.
Is it a 10? I don't think so.
I don't know.
Wait a minute. Isn't it a 10, 5, and like a fun walk? What do you use for qualifying? You know what, just take out 5K and put the race.
Okay.
I didn't realize it was a 10K.
I could, what is the, do you need a 10K to qualify for like the Chicago Marathon? Or?
I think you have to do at least a half marathon, which is 12.
Maybe I'm wrong on that. I thought it was a 10K, a 5K, and then like a mile walk.
No, because actually...
So as I, is it, we can just take that out and put the race?
Because a 5K is actually a couple, a little over two miles.
Well, wouldn't Jerry know?
Well, Jerry would know, yeah.
Yes, but she's looking at the minutes. She's just looking to correct that.
I'll just take, I'll just remove that.
Okay, just remove the race.
Trustee Clark, everybody happy?
Okay, then if you go down to the second to the last one, the Loop and WGN Podcast, I think you can just eliminate that. Okay. That's what, and then number D.
I think the going rate was to the item above.
Oh, right, okay. It did, she, that was part, she did work.
I'll just remove the whole.
Just that whole one?
Just remove that whole thing, that's what.
Okay.
Okay.
Then on number D, it said Tim, trustee Highlandbach had recommended putting $5,000 toward the Community Resource Center. Was that?
That was outside the meeting.
Outside the meeting, yeah. Okay, all right, then I'm over there.
Couple of pedicorns. ESPN.
Okay.
All right. Anything else? Any other additions or corrections? Trustee Lupfer?
That's good.
Very good, then we have a motion by trustee Lupfer, seconded by myself, to approve these minutes and we've had some corrections, so we'll encompass that into the motion. Yes, sir? So all in favor of the approval of these minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
I will abstain.
And it'll reflect that there were two abstaining because they were not at the meeting. Very good. Onward.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Can we rearrange the agenda so we can take care of our audience?
Certainly. There's no objection from any other members of the board?
Do we need a motion or?
I think that we can, we can leave formalities alone. Okay, so we have, we're under new business then. Correct?
Correct.
So we are under new business, anniversary logo, no, yes, anniversary logo first. So we have a guest present.
Do we want to do the room request first? Because that might be?
That's fine. Okay, let's go to item B1.
The logo might take a little bit longer.
All right.
All right.
Then under new business, B1, we have the Junior Women's Brew's Cruise Request for Special Use and we have some representatives of the organization here. Would you please step up to the microphone, identify yourselves and what community you're from? And we can go forward.
My name is Catherine Dooley, D-O-O-L-E-Y. I am with the Riverside Juniors. I am the chair, one of the co-chairs of this year's Brew's Cruise.
And I'm Lauren Wilton. I'm on the committee and we're both from Riverside.
Great, thank you. So we have a request for you to hold the Brew's Cruise here. We, we need to approve this because there will be alcohol involved, so I mean, we need to consider this for approval. So, does the board have any questions?
Do they have, provide with all the adequate information such as insurance?
Yes, they're aware of insurance. We're waiting for the certificates.
Our insurance writer is coming in. Last year, I know there was a problem with the wrong names being put on. They just put Riverside on, so I have her rewriting it right now to put Riverside Village and Riverside Township so that moving forward, it'll be two separate entities, but on the same writer in accordance with your guys' licensing, because it's the same for both.
And you are worried she has to go before the village?
Our, our application's been turned into them and I have been in contact with Kathy, so I'll find out what the next steps are for going before the village.
I don't have any more questions.
And we will have a security deposit also because, besides the rental, because there is alcohol involved. Any other questions?
Yeah, so more to the actual application. Is this a new application? Because I don't see some of the blanks that I usually do, like the how much for the deposit and stuff like that.
Oh, I can tell you that there's, it's a $200 rental. There's a $100 security deposit that we have requested.
Gotcha. So is this a new application form though, or?
This is the online, so it's now interactive, so the printout from it, perhaps if you want more information, we can submit that to you, but this is what comes off of the online application.
All right, very good.
Do you know my handwriting's a nightmare?
No, I know, I just, the questions are different than what we're, I'm used to seeing, so.
So if you have any questions about the nature of the event or anything, I think it's not the first time it's been held, so I don't know if you ladies would like to explain a little bit about what the event is?
Sure. This is actually the fourth year that Juniors has held the Brew's Cruise, so it's the fourth annual. This year, we have six buses. We are all but sold out. We only have nine, so I promise, nine spots left. They go to three, each bus goes to three separate breweries. Each person who's on the bus receives a ticket to purchase or to, that they exchange for beer at each of the three breweries. Try and keep it somewhat local to breweries in the western suburbs for the most part, including two that are very local, Flapjack, which is in Berwyn, and Buckledown, which is just over here in Lyons and has some ties to the community as well, as some of the owners do live in this community. We raise money for various charities. They're not designated, the funds aren't designated specifically to which charity at this point, but at the end of the year, we take the sum totals of all the money that was raised by Juniors throughout the year and then split it up amongst the various charities that have been voted on to be sponsored by our organization for the year. It's a very popular event. They then come back to this building afterwards, as they hope, where we have a, the festivities continue. We have a raffle, a live auction that's done through online and those are, of course, are awarded or handed out at the after celebration.
Very good.
Make a motion to approve?
Well, I have a question or two. We thank you for your previous support. You've been very generous to the food bank, so we appreciate that. I just want to know how old your online experience was with that application. Was it smooth? Was it easy?
Yeah, this is the second time I've done it for an event. I filled out the one for the health fair here too, so it was easy.
Good.
And Andy's really responsive, lets you know within like 20 minutes that he's received it.
Nice, good. As one of our initiatives, it's good to see it paying off.
No, I like it.
Anything else?
And Will, do we have a motion to approve this?
We have, we, we're in the middle of a motion, so I have a motion by trustee Dropka. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Dropka, second by trustee Clark, to approve the request from the Riverside Junior Women's Charity for the use of the building with alcohol on April 4th, 2020, which is a Saturday for their annual Brew's Cruise.
As long as they have the appropriate insurance.
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's, it's subject.
I would have had it today, but we just wanted to make sure it had the two entities this year.
So the motion is subject to the requirements as have already been stated, the proof of insurance and the deposits. Any other questions? Hearing none. All, well, why don't we do a roll call on this?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Dropka?
Yes.
Trustee Hallenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lupfer?
Yes.
Supervisor Will?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, lady.
Is there anyone here for the casino night? And let's go back up one to new business and for the Township Anniversary Logo, let's move to new business A. And I think we have our designer here. I forwarded to all of you the designs that have been proposed, the complete packet, and then you should have in your packets here printed out the six styles, a total of 12 different logos that have been proposed. So what? Yes, absolutely. Come on up, introduce yourself, let us get to know you and tell us where this is coming from.
My name's Karen Mitchell. I'm the graphic designer on the logos and happy to be here. I just want you to know that these logos are rough drafts. They are not considered final. They are interpretations of a style that we can proceed with. I can change fonts. We can play with it however. So they are by no means final. They are no, by no means definitive at this point. They are just directions. Okay?
So going to some of the commentary, so far, we, you, I don't know if you knew what our purpose is for the logo and how it's going to be used, but among the uses, we're going to need like embroidery for polo shirts. We will need an imprint that would go on t-shirts and of course signage and various, one of the things I think would be a logo that will be part of a laser presentation, so those are the kinds of definition we're going to need and some of the considerations we're going to have. Color is going to be a question and so forth. I think I can speak on behalf of the board that we don't use RT, so we can eliminate that when the, I think we can probably, I know that what you were going for was a little bit of the, the presentation of, you know, some of the architecture in the community and it's lovely, but I don't think anybody would recognize us as RT. So that one was probably a Noah, the start. Comments from others on the board or questions?
I have no questions, but in looking at these logos, I tend to go for the first thing that catches my eye and I like the two ones on the bottom right. That's, that's what I thought was.
Where it has 150 years underneath and the?
Right. Riverside Township, 150 years.
Either that or the one above it too.
And that's correct.
So what, are we all talking about this one or we talk, you, Tim, you said above.
That one, that one, that one.
Well, the things in that lower box, but I don't know.
Are we talking about the lower box or the upper? Mike said we're talking about?
I threw in the upper box too, because I like those, those two boxes.
No guess.
Maybe I should go to the?
I like, I like the difference from what the first would be. I like this one for the back of the t-shirt. I like that show up well, but I like this one for embroidery and an official logo. And I've found that dark on light works better than light on dark. When you're like sub-screening a t-shirt.
Depends on the t-shirt color.
Yeah, and it depends on the, like, because I've been using a logo that's meant for the other way and it just doesn't work. I forgot to just make sure, like the bulldog eyes white, you know?
So these images are the ones that we're looking at, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That's what, so.
So Karen, out of these four, which do you think would look better silkscreened? But I don't know if they're going to be on the back of any.
Yeah.
Are they going to be on the front?
I think on the front, this would be good for like a big style that you could really see it. It's got that kitschy old feel, but if you want to actually convey what we're talking about, this would, this would be better.
Do you remember the old stationary that we dug up that I showed you what the logo used to look like?
Yeah.
That bottom one is a lot, that bottom middle is a lot like what's, with the, with the bridge and all of that. It had that like green box.
You're also not looking at the correct color, just so you know. This did not come out right. You know that, right?
Oh.
It was.
Is it better?
Oh, it's, it's different colors completely.
They're more green, right?
Yeah, this did not come out.
So it's not a teal, it's more of a green?
It's definitely.
Definitely green, okay.
Oh, the, okay, all right.
Well, that's very good to know.
And maybe we ought to send the electronic files to people so that?
Well, I did send that to everybody. I just printed something out. Since we don't sit here with computers, we want, I wanted to have something. So everybody should have seen it. I did send it electronically to everyone.
This is definitely not.
Yes, right. Yeah, sorry.
One thing I'd say is the detail on the building might not lend itself to embroidery.
Exactly. The building has to be, I would say, leetron and I can do that for you. It's just a little more time consuming, so I wasn't aware of what I was going to get, but.
Well, you don't have to do embroidery. It should screen.
Silkscreen too, it'd be a little, like all those tiny little pieces.
It has to be more defined.
Yeah.
The one thing that, and I, these are, these seem to be really clean kind of images.
These are very simplistic.
Right, very simplistic, and I think they work for a lot of things that way. The one thing I would like to see if you're going to be redrawing this anyway, on some of the other images, the building seems to have some side notes and I'm sure it was because of the size that it, it took in here, but if we could do some of that, like, so it doesn't just kind of drop off, but so that there's?
There's a little grass and holes there.
Right, right, especially on the left side as you look at it.
I just, I think that maybe we ought to rethink about the price though, because I wasn't, I wasn't thinking at the time when I gave you the estimate that I was going to need to do some redrawing of that house or the house, the building, so if that's, if we can discuss that, that would be great, so. I don't know.
Because, I mean, other than that, other than, because the other images do have a little bit of other, like especially the, the multicolor one, this one, seems to have a little bit more, I don't know, looking like it's shrubbery or something around that.
Added some colors.
Right, right. So I mean, sort of a cross between that and this, if that would be possible.
I'm not sure.
I really do like.
You have to clean the line more.
I really like this one. It's clean, but maybe 150 years bigger. That, that banner, just make it, you know, twice the size, so it pops out everywhere.
I think we're talking about this one. This one?
So you're looking at the upper right then?
Yeah.
I guess you need to figure out though which one has the biggest sentences. Obviously your name has to be bigger, so we have to be careful not to get that too bold, then it becomes more important on the page. So yeah, we can increase that, but I wouldn't go too much more.
Yeah.
A little bit more would be good.
And I would say this could wait, except we need to start mark, you know, branding the events, so.
So do we, do we want to like have her come back with two, two examples between those two?
Or she could email them to us and I?
Yeah.
I would like to take another stab at those two and?
Not just have some feedback?
Yeah. And figure out, maybe we can talk about that later.
And tell us, yeah, let us know what, what it will cost to do that. Yeah, I just, the Committee of the Whole isn't until next month and I'd really like to start utilizing something as soon as possible. You know, we've already had a few events where we're using something that we kind of slept together, you know? We, we put a little banner with our usual logo, so.
So which two, are we talking about? Two that she's going to kind of tighten up a little bit?
Are three. There seem to be three, the middle bottom and the two right side.
I'm not sure. I mean, if I'm the only one that likes the middle bottom.
I like it.
Yeah, me too. I do.
I like it.
I like it because it looks kind of like?
Old timey.
Old timey, yeah.
I like the middle bottom too, so.
The middle bottom I think would be good for like a, just a PR poster.
Yes.
And that's not what we are going to do with it. It's my, I mean?
So we're, it's going to be in a light show. It's going to be on the proscenium of the stage. It's going to be on literature. It's going to be on a banner, the advertising in the park. It's going to be used electronically on all our advertising.
Right, so I mean, I would think that this?
It'll be on shirts, you know?
I would say that this would be more of a big poster and that's it, but I would, that's not what we're doing. We're putting a logo on there with all this other information about the event, correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, this will always just be branded within the other events.
Were you, did you have something?
Right, but do you have a flyer?
I, I think that it's because it's contained nicely, like you're saying, it's within a square and it feels posterized. Isn't a bad thing for the other usages, because it is contained. It's easier for printing. It's easier for shirts, however you're going to do it. It is, it's a much cleaner, concise look to me, but.
And what if we did two? I mean?
I think you'd be confusing, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I don't think there's enough events to really go with two, is my thought. You know, it's, it's not a lot bigger, but we're talking about.
I think with our input, you have enough input to narrow it down.
And I can mix two of the feels too and you'll be happy with many of that, so.
So which two, what are we talking about now? Which two, the?
Good question.
We're still three.
We're still three.
We seem to be, let's see, I think we're looking at the top one here. Is that one of them?
That's, that's correct.
The top one, the top, upper one?
Okay.
Which is in the bottom right corner of the other sheet.
They have numbers on them, don't they?
It's the six classic, but, so it would be the six, number six or page six or screen six classic, but the upper one, but not the one in green, the green field, but the one in the white field.
Okay.
Correct? And then we're also looking at five and that would be the lighter version, the bottom one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is called the Vintage Clapper.
That's what I thought it looked like.
See, I would be okay with that one if we were just going to blow it up to make four by six posters and frame it.
But you don't think that it works otherwise as a self-contained?
On a, on a back of a t-shirt with a whole bunch of other logos?
It'll be on the front of the t-shirt.
It'll be on the front.
It'll be on the front, yeah.
In the front of the t-shirt, but don't you have that number on there, right?
Well, we can let her take a look at it.
Okay.
And.
And then what were we thinking? We also looked at the lower one of the vintage three?
Yeah.
The lighter one?
Okay. Not the one with the green banner, but the white banner?
Yeah. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, do you have the three, Karen?
Is it, is this, is this in this?
My only comment would be make that one 50 years, as big as it is.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So you're just adjusting these, right? I mean, you're not coming up with, bringing?
Going to tweak them and?
No, I'm going to come up with some alternates that are within these designs. These are just roughs.
Right.
They're not final. You'll see final, more final next time. They're very, very similar, but maybe I, like for instance, the one that we're all down liking, maybe 100 years would be in that curved banner that's in number three. I might put that together and it might work really well, so I'm going to re-look at it. It just, I, I'm sure you put, I hear what you're saying. I know what you like and I think I can then incorporate that into something that you really like, so that's my plan.
That'd be great.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So how long do you think that's going to take you?
Oh, that won't take long. It'll take another few days.
Okay, so as soon as you're done, if you could email them to me and then I'll get them out? Or do you want them to email directly to you Vera?
That's fine too, if you want to email it to me.
And thank you very much for considering it. I appreciate it.
All right, then why don't we go back to our regular agenda and our next item, Communications.
Okay, we have a couple, like for Riverside Juniors sent Vera a thank you note for all of your help and support of the, from the township for inaugural, happy?
Healthy.
Healthy year of that. Another one from Vera from the Riverside Juniors. Thank you so much for coming to unlock the room for our last juniors meeting. We ended up close to 30 attendees despite the weather, so they really appreciated her coming and opening the door.
They had not scheduled that meeting. As a matter of fact, it was on the original calendar and struck, so.
We received a wonderful thank you note for our sponsorship from the Best Buddies Program. The little note here, I'll pass this around. Everybody can see. It was very nice. A thank you note from Beds Plus for renewing our $5,000 grant for use in the township. A thank you note from Access to Care for our grant for $5,000. And they sent a program sheet also. I don't know if anybody would like to see that. I'll pass that around too. And that concludes Communications this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any visitors' remarks? See, one of our very busy visitors.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Fran Sickowitz. Here is the Township Assessor to report on the activity of our office. It's quite active. We're probably seeing about 25 to 30 people a day, so it's been very busy upstairs. And, and? And, uh, and, and everyone's getting a little extra exercise. So we are having a tax appeal seminar tomorrow night. We're hosting it with Sean Morrison, our Commissioner, Cook County Commissioner, and we will be having representatives from the Cook County Assessor's Office coming. It's here in Town Hall on the second floor at seven o'clock. Um, we sent out flyers and, um, uh, North Riverside sent it out in their eflash, Riverside sent it out in their eflash, so we're hoping for a good turnout. So that's tomorrow night, and we are going to be, we are seeing people for appointments in our office through March twentieth. Um, Riverside Township residents can file an appeal online through March twenty-fourth. I'll be taking, um, all the paper appeals downtown on the twenty, let's see, twenty, twenty, on the twenty-fourth. No, I'm taking the, um, paper appeals downtown on the twenty-fourth. Actually, the twenty-fifth is the last day for online appeals with the Cook County Assessor's Office. So we are totally booked up for appointments. We're telling people they could come and, and walk in, and they could, um, just wait for a few minutes. We're probably having a fifteen to twenty minute wait, so it's really not that bad. We're getting people through as quickly as possible, and, um, it's still pretty busy. So it'll be interesting to see how this all turns out. So we're ready for a break. It's been a long forty days. The Assessor's Office extended the appeal period from thirty days to forty days, so we got a good two weeks left to go before we can wrap this up. So that's it. Any questions?
How many other Assessor's Offices do what you are doing?
Most of them do, um, especially around here. Uh, currently, the River Forest Township is taking appeals and so is Oak Park, and I've been in communication with both of those assessors, and they're both very, very busy as well. Um, and Lyons Township Assessor called me to see how things were going. She'll be here tomorrow night to kinda touch bases, see what we've been doing, so we rely on each other's previous experiences to see, you know, so that when their assessment appeal, uh, period comes up, then they can, um, have some past experience to draw from. So, yeah, so most of the townships around here, Berwin is pretty active and so is Cicero. Um, so, yeah, we all pretty much do a lot. I'm grateful that we have the size township that we do, because I know in Lyons Township, they have lines going out the door. There's a, you know, two hour wait as opposed to a twenty minute wait.
Well, it's a great service, 'cause a lot of townships don't, which, um, speaks highly of your office, so thank you for doing it.
Well, or don't do it as well, perhaps.
Right, or as well.
Most of them do, don't they?
I've heard horror stories, I've heard horror stories.
I, I'd say about half. You're, not all of them do, so.
And not all do the outreach that you do.
Not everyone does the outreach. Uh, some of the larger townships, Thornton, they do, like, they have to do at least four outreaches to, to reach out their people. They have a lot of people who aren't online. We have a lot of people who are online, which is so helpful, because we just email their comps and directions. Um, so we, we pretty much service in-house, people who don't have or aren't comfortable online, and, uh, or is newbies who are just getting used to the appeal process, so. So, yeah, it's a great, it's a great service and people do appreciate it very much. So, thank you for, um, for supporting all the work that we do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
You do a great job.
Round of applause. Very good.
Thanks for the info you left in my mail.
I don't have any particularly, um, enlightening report. Everything, you know, is, is clicking along. We've managed to dodge the bullet this week, and I shouldn't even say that, but, you know, it's a full moon week, so you never know what that week will bring. But, um, you know, I've been working on various aspects of the hundred and fiftieth anniversary. The, um, the elevator issues and the, uh, the project is underway, and I've been, uh, participating at various meetings of other groups as well. Took part in a seminar yesterday, hoping to have some enlightenment on what to deal, do with the, um, COVID-nineteen situation. Um, it was more of a communication than any real enlightenment about this particular situation. Have had a brief inquiry from a member of the exercise class, wondering whether we're going to cancel classes. At this point, they're all adults, they're not paying for the class. Jerry disinfects everything before and after his classes, and he's encouraged them, if they're sick, to stay home. And so I think we'll keep running them. If people come, they're, they're welcome to. And I think that the benefits of the exercise probably outweigh the risk in a group of less than twenty people who do their own exercising and move about the room. Uh, we also, I've, uh, been to, oh, the supervisors of, uh, the Cook County, the Township Supervisors of Cook County meeting to try to reorganize that group, and I've been participating in discussions of, as I said, the various aspects of the anniversary celebrations individually with trustees who are working on those projects. So I have nothing other that, than that in particular to report, but if any of you have any questions on something I may not have touched on, please feel free to ask. Are there any trustees who would like to make a report? Uh, Trustee Clark?
Uh, yes, I wanna say, uh, not yesterday, but the Monday before, they had a record number of attendees at the exercise class, which was twenty-four. So, which is great, and they had twenty yesterday. So tomorrow is our, um, monthly lunch and our first quarter event, which the group switchback is planned.
Very good. It's always very entertaining, so, thank you. Trustee Drapka, do you have anything to report? Trustee Luffer, do you have anything to report? Trustee Hylmbach?
Good evening. Yes, well, thank you for, for that. The Mental Health Board will be holding their budget meeting, that will be tomorrow evening, uh, down in the Community Resource Center. We're looking forward to expanding some of our programs and, uh, working with our new consultant, Dr. Joe Trierani. Also, on March twenty-eighth, we are going to be doing another program, uh, in, in our hundred and fiftieth anniversary, dealing with suicide, uh, Let's Talk. Uh, it's done by the Pillars Community Health Group, which is one of our core sponsors, and they are, uh, we've got a flyer that came out today, we'll be putting it out around town, and it will be spread out through, um, through our board, and, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Anybody who would like to see it, I think I sent everybody a copy of the, of the flyer. All right, then on to unfinished business. We, uh, as a committee of the whole, we did have the opportunity to speak with Matt Muto, the teacher from District Ninety-Six, LJ Howser Junior High, who spoke to us last week about the program and why the, they have applied for more than last year. And, um, if any of, either of the trustees would like to speak to that at all, but we were recommending that the, uh, the, the grant be awarded in the amount of three thousand dollars, which should help about twenty families. It may still, um, cause some people, or some people may still not go, but hopefully none of those will not go because of financial reasons. Twenty families can get a fifty percent scholarship, so that as many young cougars can participate in this event, uh, at Bradford Woods in Indiana. It's a team-building and making good choices kind of program.
Uh, can we back up a minute? He caught me asleep at the wheel. Uh, Mental Health Board, can I ask a question on that?
Yes, of course.
Could, could you hold off actually, since we're in the middle of this?
Sure, yeah. I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to, 'cause I, I just wanted to come.
Well, go ahead, go ahead and ask the question, go ahead.
Um, the presentation I noticed in the consultant's report, it mentions that, uh, the presentation you had on the marijuana?
Yes.
That it was filmed?
It was not filmed.
Well, it was filmed only on my, on my.
It was filmed on Vera's phone.
'Cause in the consultant's report, it says it was filmed, so I didn't, and I don't know whose handwriting that is.
That's probably mine. Uh, it, it's supposed to be up on a website.
That's what I was asking about.
Yeah, yes. Is it, did, did it go up on the website?
I don't think it went up. I, sorry, I was in and out of town and other things, so. Uh, I will check if it's a quality that we can put there.
Not so much the video, but the PowerPoint presentation.
Um, I believe that it was submitted, but I haven't seen it up there yet.
Sorry, Dr..
Sure.
That's not a problem. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, yes, the PowerPoint will go up from. Okay, so we have the consideration for the LJ Howser Junior High, three thousand dollar grant for, um, Cougar Advance.
I make a motion that we award this grant.
I second it.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Luffer, to award the grant to Howser. Are there any more questions? If not, then there's a money consideration, so Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hylmbach?
Yes.
Trustee Luffer?
Yes.
Supervisor Rolf?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. All right, next up is planning for the Township Anniversary. I did share with all of you, uh, communications about some of the things that we, uh, were questioning, what the approach would be to a food competition, what the, um, where, where the electricity comes from, mentioning to the village to plan a laser show, that there are, um, and so this is a response to some of that. And, uh, we're, it's an ongoing communication as other things come up. Uh, they, they noted that there will have to be fencing around where alcohol would be permitted and just various considerations, where they, uh, arrange for electricity for the RAW event as well as July third and fourth, the health inspection forms needed for temporary food service vendors, and, uh, they want to review any site plans, which obviously we would be putting out site plans in the total application. Any, anything else anybody wants to?
How long in advance do we have to have this for the, uh, village to approve?
Well, I'm gonna need to get at least something in soon, which they, they need two board meetings, I think, for consideration and then approval, and right now they're, they have two a month. I think they might go to one in the summer, so. I'd like to do that sooner than later, but there have been certain considerations. I don't wanna submit a half-baked plan, and since we need to do some mapping of where various aspects will be within the park, uh, that was part of the consideration.
Um, question about, uh, references costs. Um, and it goes back to a topic that I think Trustee Luffer brought up many moons ago. But when it comes to costs, um, I'm, I'm not following, um, how much are they charging us for police assistance and, and stuff like that. We're, we're a fellow governmental entity, and charging us, uh, money for things, where, where is the?
Well, there's gonna have to be extra personnel on, on duty, let's face it, you know? And, uh, there are certain road closures and all. We're gonna be treated apparently like every other, uh, user of the parks.
Really?
Yee, that's been my experience with other things as well, permits for building work and so forth. So we can certainly talk about and negotiate some things, but I won't have any price, uh, quotes until they see what the plan is and they estimate how much personnel, how many horses to block streets, how much, how many various things, how, how many different permits. So I don't really have a figure from them yet. And that's why I wanna get it done soon, so that we have a better estimate on that.
When it came to personnel costs and, uh, street, rolling street closures for our event in November, was there cost associated with that?
So far, I have not been invoiced anything for that.
Okay, well, that might be, uh, a topic to bring up, to say, you know, hey.
Yeah, but the, uh, true, though, they only blocked that off for like ten or fifteen.
It was very short.
Okay.
We'll take a look at all that. I can't, I can't tell you at this point what the answer is.
Um, yeah, okay.
I did include, um, kind of an outline of the queue for a clause with some yellow highlights. Uh, if you could look that over before the next Committee of the Whole meeting. Um, give me some feedback so I can update the document, we can look at a more finalized, uh, proposal. At this point, the yellow highlights are the kind of questions for us to answer.
And this also would be part of the submission to the village, so they could tell us what, what their posture would be on that. Okay. Thank you. Anything else on the hundred and fiftieth anniversary celebration?
Uh, well, we need to approve some more money for the logo.
Do we have an estimate for the amount?
No, we have up to, right now in the budget's up to six hundred dollars.
I thought we gave her six hundred dollars.
We approved up to six hundred dollars, but she just said that there, she's gonna need a little more.
What was her bill that she submitted to make these drawings, these?
Uh, well, she hasn't, um, we gave her a deposit, we budgeted up to six hundred dollars.
Okay. How much did she get for?
Uh, well, she hasn't billed us yet for that. We gave her a deposit for a hundred and fifty, 'cause she uses, she won't start work till she gets a deposit.
Okay, so we gave her a deposit for a hundred and fifty. I think it would be a good idea to get the bill for this, and then we can go from there.
Well, I think we need an estimate of how much, but we need to, I don't know what we're willing to put out for it. We have no idea how much more.
Right, so we need a bill for how much did this cost? How, how much did this cost?
I don't think she considers that. I mean, that, it's a work in progress, because she submitted these for some input. So I think that the idea was that we could get a logo design for that six hundred. If she's actu, I think what she's saying is if it involves more than taking our graphic and adapting it to other things, if she actually has to start doing artwork on the building, for example, redrawing it, that would be extra. I don't know if that's gonna be necessary, so it's kind of hard to tell where we stand on that. I don't know.
This is a free revision, say, or design.
Yeah, well, can't we just wait for her revisions, and if there's going to be an extra cost, she can add it in and then we can go down it.
That's fine with me, but that's fine with our.
That's acceptable to everyone, 'cause we really don't know.
We don't know.
Are we talking an extra fifty, or are we talking an extra six hundred?
Yeah, that's what, so that's fine, if that's, uh, that's fine with me. I just wanna make sure that we're all aware of it, you know, so.
Right.
Well, that's, but to the point, though, that I'm trying to make is I'd like to know how much did this cost of her to develop this?
I agree.
Because then we can go from there and decide whether or not it's worth, if this, if what she developed for us tonight, if that's six hundred dollars, and now she's gonna go back and make six more drawings, 'cause I was very clear.
I don't think so. The six hundred was an estimate of what she expected the project to take, with certain expectations, that she would receive certain graphics and that she would make a presentation. From that, she would tweak that. She fully told us, these are not finished things, so. I don't know how far the clock is ticking at this point, or the meter is ticking on this. It's hard to tell. Um, she by no means thinks that she's delivering, a, a deliverable at this point, a, a finished product, so. This, you know, she. at this point, a, a finished product, so this, you know, she got a deposit so she could start working on it and reserve that time for us. How much time is already invested, we don't know any of that, so she has not invoiced us, she has not indicated, therefore, we'll keep going to the point where, okay.
And Mike, the, it was up to six hundred dollars.
And she knows that?
She knows that.
Okay, so, but when she said tonight, "I'm gonna need more money," what, what was she referring to? Was she referring to the one hundred and fifty dollar deposit, or was she referring to the six hundred dollar agreement?
I think she did what the redesigner does when you submit a budget, "Oh, I shouldn't prefer more."
Yeah.
I think so, I don't think it's gonna be, I, I don't think we're gonna prove any money.
She had a redesign, the, the, if she had to include artwork, she was going to have to discuss more money, is the way I understood.
Right. I don't, I think she's going to work with what she's got right now, I don't think she's actually planning to charge a great deal more at this point, she's going to work with what she's got, perfect these items that we preferred, and try to give us something, knowing how we wanna use it, and then, um, she, I expect that she'll then tell us, you know what, if you need more shrubbery around the building or anything like that, that'll be extra.
Well, I hope you're right, cause I got, I got it from the fact that she was going to do the ones that we liked, and we were gonna get more designs, or based off the ones that we liked.
She knows where the budget is now, she hasn't asked for a specific amount, so I think she's gonna try to develop as much as she can within that budget, and then let us know if it's gonna take more.
She'll say, "Do you like these?" You'll say, "No, we need artwork," she'll say, "Well, that'll be X amount more," or, "Do you like these?" "Yeah, they're great." I think, I think the cost increase will come after the first revision, that's when she'll say, "Okay, if you wanna keep moving forward and keep revising," so I don't think we're on that, we, we didn't agree to any expenditure today, so.
Right. Yeah, I think if, if she was really concerned that she could not produce anything for us, she would've told us, "Well, it's gonna be more than I quoted."
You think so?
My interpretation of what she said this evening was that if she had to take the building and not use our artwork and actually do her own artwork of the building, then there would be an additional cost, I didn't think that she was referring to.
I thought that was the, the, if she had to redraw the building, would that be an additional cost? So, um, moving on, not to be a negative Nancy, but what are we gonna do if it rains? On the stick.
Well, we've already heard from the sound equipment person that the equipment is expensive, and if it rains, it's being put away, so we'll have an acoustic, uh, musical option, I guess, um, you know, it just, it can't function in the rain. That's something we need to consider. How much of this can we do?
What about your barbecue, guys?
Although barbecue in the rain.
That barbecue in the rain, okay.
But it's not gonna rain, so we don't have to worry about it next time.
I certainly hope not, but I think, you know, we need to, uh, be prepared.
You're correct, normally I would say that's a very pleasant time of year, however, last year, that very same weekend was when North Riverside had to cancel an event because of torrential rains.
Right, yeah, that's what.
So, um, we have to take a look at what other options there might be, if there's anything that we could move into the building at that point. Would we, would we do some kind of a celebration in here instead, and at one point would we pull the plug on outdoor stuff?
I think that's something we can discuss, too, with the committee a little bit.
Right. Alright, that'll be an agenda item for next time.
One thing, could you send me a copy of the health inspection form?
I think, yeah, I think it was in the original, but I will send it again.
Yeah, it did come through on the reply.
Very well, um, next item is the township budget, I have given you another draft that I tweaked a little bit more, um, please study that, it does not yet include any changes from last year for mental health, they are, as you heard, they're meeting tomorrow, so we will plug, uh, the numbers in on that. I, I will tell you that I am planning for every contingency, so I'm, I'm now trying to dial it back, because I'm trying to, we've never been spending what we have in the budget, but, you know, things start happening, and, uh, so I'm trying to, uh, plan accordingly, but this is, um, this includes considerations for what it's going to cost us to finish the elevator project, for, um, some bridge repair work, hopefully some painting, but if, if the budget is too excessive, we, we, we can, uh, we can readdress that, but I think that we probably need to sit down and, you know, everybody needs to take a look at these numbers and see if they make any sense. Okay?
You've got capital projects, like the roof in there, too, I see.
I'm sorry?
The roof, capital projects.
Well, the capital projects, that, I just, I added more into there.
Yeah.
We had it at three hundred thousand, I put it at three fifty, and put more into the equipment, which I consider the elevator project, so, um, and that's basically just bank, so I don't expect that we will spend it next year, that is just being reserved so that we're not spending it elsewhere.
Right.
One thing I might also put on the, the horizon would be re-landscaping the front of the building, uh, I, I obviously would not be bidding on the project.
Right.
Uh, but some kind of, uh, update to the front, I mean, it could be a small minimal thing, it could be a complete new lands- landscape, but-
So, here's the thing on that, that will have to be a joint project with the village to figure out what they will, what they actually want, because the land is theirs.
Alright.
And the agreement is, the reason we do the, the, uh, grass cutting and cleanup of the front is because in return, they do the plowing in Riverside Lawn, so, you know, yes, we could, we could budget to do some of that, but we need to see what they would approve, cause it's, we're really improving their land.
Right.
And yeah, some of the, some of the vegetation there is getting old and-
It's looking pretty old, it's looking neglected.
Right.
And that's just my eye, you know?
Right, and again, you know, it, we haven't had the spring cleanup yet or any of that, when they'll, they'll trim back some of that stuff and, and give it a little bit more visual.
Should I, um, approach a trustee of the village?
No, just, why don't you, if you have some ideas on what you think needs something, then I can approach our regular landscaper and maybe get a bid, uh, if they would like to, to do that, or, you know, put it out for bid for other things, but I don't wanna go out for a bid not knowing what I'm asking for, so if you have some thoughts on it.
It wouldn't be much, I mean, it'd be under the ten thousand dollar, I mean, I wouldn't look at it.
Okay. In which case, yes, landscaping would need to be up considerably, cause I've kept it low.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Alright. Very good.
Um, Vera?
Yes.
Um, we're down to new business?
Yes.
Back on the swim club casino night, um, do they have to have a special permit or license because they're gambling?
Well, that is out of our purview, but I think that they do, I think, I think that they're probably using a company that does that kind of thing.
And they provide the license.
And they-
Okay.
There's really no money switching hands, I believe that, uh, the people pay money to have the, um, to pay for the chips, but I think the chips are cashed in for prizes.
Raffles or something, yeah.
Yeah, so.
In any case, I think it is out of our purview, though.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I will make sure that we ask the question of, as to what, I don't know if the village has any requirements, but I think that we need more information and help.
I thought the state had requirements, yeah.
Yeah.
You know what, though, on that, no, uh, trustee Clark does bring up a good point, do we have a whole harmless agreement of some kind that goes with these room rentals?
Yes. Yeah, that's part of the, that's part of-
I for that, I know that we did a while ago.
It's part of the package, and, uh, yeah, as to what we take responsibility for, what they do, and that's why we had the lawyer look over the law.
Right, well, I just don't want illegal gambling in this building.
No, no real gambling, yes.
Well, I mean, but if they do, then they get fined, and it's not our responsibility, our responsibility, I mean, you know?
Shock to their gambling.
Okay, but I will ask about who's doing the setup and the licensing.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, Riverside Swim Club Casino Night Extravaganza.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Hohlenbach, to approve the Swim Club Casino Night request, and that will involve a two hundred dollar rental and a one hundred dollar security deposit.
As long as they have the appropriate insurance.
Yes, yes, need insurance, that's part of it, so, uh, that, yes, that will include all the requisites within our agreement.
Yeah.
Um, so, if there's no other questions, I have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the request of Riverside Swim Club for a May sixteenth, uh, casino night, event starting at seven PM, this would take place in the auditorium, and the, um, they would require the necessary insurance, dram shop insurance, and, um, the security deposit and rental, and I will inquire about the, um, the vendor who is taking care of it and licensing. So, with that being said, um, would clerk Blau please call the roll on this?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hohlenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
My wife's on the board, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Alright, thank you. The next item, we have a couple of budgetary transfers, simply because another issue came up after I'd already drafted the one, so we've got two of them, and these are, we have enough in the budget, just not in the right lines, so I can explain that the budgetary transfer of appropriations for town programs and operating supplies, um, we are, we need to transfer basically out of town programs into youth programs, because more of the grants that we gave involved children, so we have, um, sixteen thousand that we would transfer from town programs, which still is quite comfortable, and move that to town programs, and then operating supplies were a little, um, we had not spent all of that in the budget, and we're gonna move that to office supplies, so the adjusted appropriations would then make town programs one hundred four thousand instead of one hundred twenty, youth programs twenty-six thousand, uh, instead of ten thousand, office supplies six thousand instead of five, and operating supplies, uh, would be five thousand instead of six, I believe is how that worked out. So, what is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the budgetary transfer appropriations.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budgetary transfers out of sixteen seventeen and seventeen ten into sixteen forty-five and seventeen hundred. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, um, no, this should go, this should go roll call.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hohlenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
The other budgetary transfer of appropriations is, um, we've started identifying, uh, telephone, pulling that out of utilities, and so, uh, it, it's not easy, because some of it is internet, but we're going to change that to communications in the next budget, rather than just telephone, to, um, to solve that, but we're, therefore, utilities has more than enough, and telephone was a little overdrawn, so it would be utilities, account sixteen eighteen, the sum of three thousand would be removed from there and moved to telephone and commu-, um, for, in the future known as communications, for the sum of three thousand, for the adjusted appropriations then being, account sixteen sixteen will be eight thousand, and account sixteen eighteen will be twelve thousand. I will entertain a motion to approve that budgetary transfer appropriations.
I make the motion that we approve this budgetary transfer of appropriations.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Trustee Clark moves, trustee Hohlenbach seconds, the budgetary transfer of appropriations as noted, um, between sixteen eighteen and sixteen sixteen. Clerk Blau?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hohlenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you. And now we have before us the, um, agenda for the town, annual town meeting, this must be approved in advance by this board, there were no requests for additional items to be placed on the agenda this year, so it is basically a very, uh, basic agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the agenda for that annual meeting on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by trustee Clark, seconded by trustee Lutford, to approve the annual town meeting agenda for April fourteenth, twenty twenty, which includes a welcome, call to order, budget allegiance, election of moderator, oath of moderator, approval of minutes for the last annual town meeting, new business, township reports, setting the date for the next annual town meeting, and adjournment. All in favor of approving that agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you. For your information, there are a few items there, uh, it's the current report on our website, it's all the technical things.
Yeah, I have a question on the website, um, I can't see on the second page here, I don't know if you've got something better, but I'm looking at the bottom here, uh, Google Analytics, and I can't tell, uh, which pie is which.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, you know what, um, let me-
I mean, the, the one on the right is easy, because obviously the seventy-one percent to twenty-eight percent, but the one on the left, it's a little difficult to tell which one, which ones are which.
Well, the little bitty one would be the social.
Right, and then obviously the big one is fifty-three, but then you have twenty-seven and thirteen, you know?
Well, I would say the direct is the larger one, and referral is the, the-
Yeah.
The one that's less than a quarter of, you know, probably a, a fifth of the circle. I have the color version in my office, if you'd like to take a look at it.
Okay.
And that counts for any of you, I can make you a color copy on my printer, because this is just run off on the regular copy room.
I think on our website, we need it, to make it, um, easier to find the events, maybe even have them on the first page and you could click on them.
We had that discussion when we met over this, um, that was definitely something that I asked, for one, the calendar has not been maintained as well, and we are changing some of the upper, um, tabs, because too many things were buried under resources, I said I'd like to see news and events, uh, so that is part of her mission this month, to clean that up, to make it more user-friendly, because we, uh, we observed that as well. And we talked about, um, the, there are a few items that are supposed to be posted, and it's been a little slow, so, um, we're, we're binding on a regular basis, because it hasn't gotten uploaded quite as quickly as I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Then we also have, um, a reminder, uh, the deadline for registration is tomorrow, so if- so if you plan to attend next week's meeting of the trustees division, please let us know by tomorrow, so that we can register you for that and cut a check for the appropriate amount. I don't, I didn't hear it from anyone except trustee Clark, so if any of you.
I think I signed up on that travel.
Okay, you, okay, then I will make sure that Andrew has got that. So, um. Okay, so we've got Clark and Hylenbach, right?
I'm a, I'm a no, though.
Oh, you're a no, okay.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, anybody else planning to go? Okay. Thank you, and then we have the upcoming senior fair. Uh, with that in mind, I've already ordered, um, giveaway items, and I trust that you would like us to participate, it's a minimal fee. Um, I don't believe that Fran is going to be available for that, I think they've got it a week later than usual, and so I believe she's going to be out of town or in some training sessions, so.
I can help you, Fran.
Thank you, we will have a table and some items to give away, and, uh, maybe we could raffle a turkey. I think that would be great.
All I need to do is bring the dry ice.
Anyway, so, uh, we will participate in that. And with that, we are down to warrants, and I believe that trustee Hylenbach is planning to make motion on those.
That is correct. Trustee Hylenbach moves as the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified, identified on the general warrant for March twenty twenty, in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-three cents, as presented to this board on the tenth day of March twenty twenty.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Hylenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the general warrant in the amount of fourteen thousand, three hundred dollars and thirty-three cents. Please call the roll, clerk Blau.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Walt?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
I have a motion by trustee Hylenbach that the board ratify and authorize payment of the amounts indicated on the following warrants, the utility warrant for March twenty twenty, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and seventy-two cents, the payroll warrant, in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty-five cents, the health warrant, in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, uh, grants, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, petty cash, in the amount of one eighty-one point oh seven, the general assistance warrant, in the amount of two thousand dollars, the township radio players warrant, in the amount of two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant, uh, in the amount of one fifty-six ninety-three. All of the above is presented to the board on this tenth day of March twenty twenty.
Thank you, trustee Hylenbach, do I hear a second?
Second.
Then I have a motion by trustee Hylenbach, seconded by trustee Clark, to approve the following warrants for March twenty twenty, a utility warrant in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and one dollars and seventy-two cents, the payroll warrant in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and six dollars and fifty-five cents, the health warrant in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-eight cents, the grants warrant in the amount of twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, the cash, petty cash warrant in the amount of one hundred eighty-one dollars and seven cents, general assistance warrant in the amount of two thousand dollars, township radio players warrant in the amount of two hundred dollars, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of one hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-three cents.
I've shaved my haircut two minutes.
Clerk Blau, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Drapka?
Yes.
Trustee Hollenbach?
Yes.
Trustee Lutford?
Yes.
Supervisor Walt?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn this beautiful meeting.
I will second it.
I have a motion by trustee Drapka, seconded by trustee Lutford, to adjourn this meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried, thank you very much, meeting's adjourned.
Another one for the history books, people.